Okay, let's reconvene. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out any actions in closed session.
There were no actions reportable out from closed session, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Now we'll have the invocation led by trustee Wright, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Jay.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for gathering us together in this board meeting this evening. We again thank thee for the freedoms that we have and to live in this great land of America. We pray specifically this evening for the families, friends, and everyone who is affected by the tragedies of the recent shootings in Dallas, Texas, where five police officers were killed. On Sunday, in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, where three police officers were fatally shot. And also, the recent terrorist attack in southern France. We take comfort in knowing that during these times, people come together to honor and demonstrate the best. We also pray for all of our police officers, our military members, and veterans. We continue to pray for rain, to relieve us from the drought conditions that we are experiencing. We thank thee for our students and for our dedicated faculty, administration, and staff in our district. Bless our Board of Trustees, our Acting Chancellor, and all in attendance in this, in our decisions and efforts this evening. We sincerely pray for guidance, and do so in his name. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to our great flag of our wonderful nation.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll go into 2.4, Public Comments. I see that we have three requests for public comment, and I'd like to ask Kara Street to come forward as the leadoff hitter here. And I think you know, or most of you know, that we ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes. Thank you very much.
My name is Dr. Kara Street, and I have been asked by many faculty and staff to read this letter on behalf of Dr. Chris McDonald. On Monday, June 13th, Dr. Chris McDonald, Saddleback College Assistant Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness and Dean of Mathematics, Science, and Engineering, was relocated to the IVC campus. There was little detail only that it had been his choice. Within a few days, several faculty and staff met with Vice Chancellor David Bouguet to express our concern over Chris's abrupt departure. We learned very little, except that Chris had left Saddleback to avoid a situation. At that time, we expressed to Dr. Bouguet our support for Dr. McDonald. The district gave Chris McDonald an almost impossible job of dealing with the faculty and staff on the construction of the new science building. Although there were problems associated with the building design, its construction, and the end users' role in it, one thing is very clear: Chris made the science building happen. When it opens in August, it will be in large part due to the hard work done by Chris McDonald. Rumors always circulate within the district, and we, your scientists and mathematicians, tend to question the veracity of them. However, it appears that Chris McDonald is currently the victim of lies being perpetrated by some people on this campus. Our division has interacted with Dr. McDonald for over four years, and that is longer than any other group in this district. We have come to know him and his management style. Chris is not a bully. He does not push people around. He is not aggressive nor abusive. In fact, as our dean, Chris met with faculty and staff and came to consensus before making decisions. He united our division. He is one of the few Saddleback College administrators that is both loved and respected by his division as well as many others. We strongly request that you reevaluate the decision behind Dr. McDonald's transfer and critically evaluate the personal agendas of those who slandered his name. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Huntley.
Hi, my name is Tony Huntley. I've been at this institution for 25 years. That makes me one of its dinosaurs. I've seen it all come and go. I simply want to add a point to Kara's statement because she couldn't get it in in two minutes. There's something very important that you need to know. When human beings came into existence on this planet, they were endowed with traits that clearly separated them from other animal species. Most importantly, these included the ability to speak and the ability to think and remember. All of a sudden, we could evaluate our interaction with our conspecifics not based on how big their teeth were, or how sharp their claws were, but rather on a spoken and remembered record of their past behavior: reputation. That reputation became the hallmark of the individual. That reputation is based in large part on integrity. If you ask me what quality I would most like to see in a college administrator, I would say integrity: being honest, accepting your mistakes, admitting your mistakes, apologizing for them. When Chris McDonald came to Saddleback College, he brought that kind of integrity with him. He never abandoned that integrity. I am often called upon to write letters of recommendation for my students. The most important ones I write are to professional schools, in particular, medicine. That is probably the most important letter that I write, and I won't write a letter of recommendation for a student if I can't say that I would trust my life in their hands. That is the ultimate integrity. I'm telling you this now. I would give this accolade to Chris McDonald. I would write that letter of recommendation for him. Please consider that.
Thank you. Now we have Bob Cosgrove.
Good evening, members of the Board. Bob Cosgrove here, co-chair of accreditation. I would like to, I wasn't going to say anything about Chris McDonald, but his leaving has left us with a dent in our standard four, and that's a serious concern for us. The reason I'm here today is to commend Chancellor Gary Portner. I have known Gary an entire time that he was a vice chancellor and worked with him as Senate President and in accreditation as well. And I've worked at a number of schools where I've met many administrators, including Texas Tech, Missouri State, Illinois State, even Chapman, where I've taught a couple of part-time courses. And at, some of these administrators, all of them, have influenced me wherever I was. At Texas Tech, Chancellor Kevassus eventually became the Secretary of Education in federal government. He is now serving time in federal penitentiary. Others I've met have taught me lots of things. Ned Daughney, when I came in, the first day he was there as our president, I said, "Hello, Ned, I'm the academic senate president, Bob Cosgrove. If you ask me a question, I'll give you a straight answer unless it's a confidence." He said, "Bob, don't always believe it, I'll tell you the truth." But he always did, I think. Gary Portner is the same way, a man of integrity, a man who tried to solve problems here. And even though we have serious problems across the board, we have an issue of saying this place is better because of Gary's presence. And in The Chronicle of Higher Education, which you have probably all seen, the issue of this is a great place to work is just that, and it's in large measure because of Gary. And I'm pleased to see Deborah Fitzsimmons stepping in to be the interim. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we're on to Board Reports. And I'm going to like to go first. Executive privilege, I guess. I just, I want to echo the thoughts that Bob Cosgrove just delivered here. As you know, Gary, Chancellor Portner is retired, and I think I speak for a lot of the Board, and I suspect some of them will speak on this as well, of Gary's immense contributions to the district. I wasn't here when he was hired, but my understanding is that he was absolutely the right person at the right time and what the district needed, and I think had done an outstanding job moving the district forward. And we have a commendation, a resolution, in a few minutes we'll do, but I think also speaking, other Board members will probably want to speak outside of the formal resolution to say that how appreciative we all are of the contributions that he made to the district over the years. We have now turned and appointed an acting chancellor, and I want to just convey to everyone the full confidence that this Board has in Dr. Fitzsimmons, serving in the role of acting chancellor. I think we are in a period of transition, but I also believe that we're going to move forward in a very positive way for the district, for Saddleback College, for Irvine Valley College. I think the Board is committed to do that. We are looking forward to a transparent search process for a permanent chancellor that will occur, ensue over the next few months. It'll be open, it'll be transparent, it'll be inclusive, and we're going to try to get the best and brightest to apply to this great district. And knowing where we are, knowing the kind of colleges we have with our student success rates, our transfer rates, our graduation rates, our CTE programs that we offer, we're going to get the best candidates across the nation, and that's the exciting part. So, it's sad to say goodbye to the chancellor, but looking forward to the next steps in having the acting chancellor in place. Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Well, I'd like to just kind of add to that a little bit on discussing Chancellor Portner's role. We came in at about the same time I got elected, and shortly thereafter, he was, took his position as chancellor, so I haven't worked with anybody else. So I can honestly say he's the best chancellor I've ever worked with. But joking aside, he really is good. He was brought in for very specific purposes, and I don't think anybody can doubt that he fulfilled those purposes to the utmost. We're getting a report tonight on the student success scorecard, and I imagine that you can see his handiwork in there in some regard. Even though the colleges do a lot of the work, the chancellor ultimately is responsible for making sure those things happen, and I think we can all give him credit for that. Other than that, it's rather a slow time right now, but I did appear on Laguna Woods television station to give the report on the district's behalf. We all rotate to do that, and we were able to express the good things that are going on in the arts at both IVC and Saddleback, and promote the emeritus program that they are very interested in, and give the good news. So, it's not all bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I want to thank Gary Portner for what a wonderful job he did. He will sure be missed. He was great, and I hope he has a great retirement. The other thing that I did on Friday, July 8th, I attended the Irvine Valley College Board of Governors Foundation Retreat. It was at the University Club at UC Irvine. Discuss was the objective for the coming year. The IVC Gala held April 2nd at the Marconi Auto Museum made the most money for a single fundraising event ever at IVC. And also want to talk about Elsa Oransky. She's the executive director of the IVC Foundation, and she is doing a superb job.
That was quick. Good. Thank you, trustee Jay. Trustee Wright.
I also wanted to echo my accolades for Gary Portner. I've known Gary for quite a while. I remember when he was first hired as the vice chancellor for business services, and he did a wonderful job there. Part of the reason why the district has been so financially, in such good financial status is because of Gary Portner. He'll be remembered for that and for many other things that he's done. And so, we will all miss Gary Portner. He was a good friend, a good colleague, and I thought the world of him. I just wanted to report on two events. Saddleback College Automotive Technology Program was highlighted recently in an Orange County Register article for its role in training teachers who will take part in a program that teaches students about electric vehicles. I was able to visit that program during the month of June when they held that. In fact, I spent over an hour with Cliff Meyer, who showed me around their facility down on lower campus at Saddleback College, and showed me what they were doing, and I saw the electric car that they were putting together. What's going to happen is that there will be courses here at Saddleback and other courses throughout the region who will talk about the electric car and what, if it says it will have it. At Saddleback College, the course is scheduled to be launched hopefully by the summer of 2017 as part of the school's alternate technician program, but could be ready to go as early as spring of 2017. It's a big draw, according to Cliff Meyer. The hand-on applications help students learn and gives them confidence, not just in autos, but physics and science. And the last item I just want to report on very briefly is that I want to applaud IVC for hosting a barbecue for the Association of California Community College Administrators. They're holding a course now down here called, I think it's called 1 Administrative 101, which actually trains administrators. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I'll have some additional remarks regarding Chancellor Portner as well when I pull 5.2 off the consent calendar, but I wanted to use the time that I'd normally use tonight in talking about specific district and college activities and events and news, instead to expand a little bit more on some of the remarks that trustee Wright made during the invocation. I just feel compelled to at least speak out about some of the violence that is currently gripping many of our cities, pitting disgruntled citizens against law enforcement. We absolutely cannot ever condone the killing of men and women that we have charged with protecting us and the communities that we live in. While there may hopefully be a few, very few rogue members of law enforcement, we have the means and hopefully now the willingness to deal with those issues. I want to publicly thank those members of our local law enforcement, faith, business, and civic communities, like for example, Police Chief Mike Hamel of Irvine, Reverend Mark Whitlock, who are attempting to diffuse some of the tension and bring people together in dialogue and discuss how we can trust each other more humanely and understand the dynamics from our own uniquely personal perspectives. On a national basis, I certainly empathize with the frustration that many people have from the lack of responsiveness to their concerns by those that we've elected to address critical issues that we face in our society. We may certainly disagree and disagree passionately about some fundamental beliefs, but we also can do so in a respectful manner and achieve reasonable compromises, I think, in many areas. I'm grateful to be part of a Board that has adopted that approach for the sake of our students and the communities that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Trustee Milchiker.
Thank you. I want to echo several of my other Board members' comments about Chancellor Portner. I want to thank him for serving our district as chancellor for six years, stepping out of retirement when we called for his help, and then, prior to that, serving as deputy chancellor for fiscal services for 11 years. And we thank him for his dedication, his honesty, and his worthy service to our district. I won't repeat what the other Board member said, but since our last board meeting, I attended several seminars where our college presidents met with prominent educational and business leaders in our community, as well as a classified learning lunch. Saddleback College Todd Burnett and Kristen Vital, the superintendent of the Capistrano Unified District, spoke at the Ocean Institute in Dana Point. And President Burnett appropriately emphasized why students should start at Saddleback College prior to going to another post-secondary educational institution. Karen Martin and the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate put on an excellent workshop for Irvine Valley College classified staff, and David Bouguet gave an outstanding presentation on how to succeed at work. Very, very helpful. The Irvine Valley College President Glenn Rockmore, UCI Chancellor Howard Gilman, superintendent of the Irvine Unified School District Terry Walker, and chairman and CEO of Edwards Life Sciences Michael Muslim presented at UCI. This was followed by a discussion moderated by Orange County Business Council editor Jerry Sullivan, and they talked about how business and education, all segments of higher education and K-12 can work together to improve our community. It's so valuable to our colleges and our students that our CEOs, our college presidents are out there building bridges to the K-12 schools, the universities, and our business partners in our district. And sincere thanks to acting chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons for spending Sunday answering my gazillion excellent questions on tonight's agenda. Well, she said they were excellent questions, and I believed her. And the rest of the Board thanks her too, so I will not be asking a gazillion questions at the board meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Milchiker. Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I wanted to say I offer my sincere appreciation to Gary Portner's immense contributions to Saddleback, to IVC, to our entire district. For a man to be on vacation and to see the needs that we had and to, cut short, I'll never forget that day, that he said yes and he hurried back, I just thought this man really is dedicated. He's a man who always had an open door. He's a man who offered his business sense to make the state of California respect this college, the colleges, even more than they had before. And he's a man of commitment to the stability of this district. He will be missed. I'd like to steal some of the words that Tony Huntley shared for Chris, because I could also say the same for Gary. I also want to extend my appreciation to vice chancellor, oops, to acting chancellor Fitzsimmons. She's awesome, and I appreciate your willingness to jump right in. On a softer note, I went to see Beauty and the Beast a couple weeks, or week and a half ago. It was phenomenal. I've been to several of the outdoor productions. I never saw Beauty and the Beast. I had no idea that was a clock, had no idea what chip was, but I found out, and I have to say, if you haven't gone to any of these productions, so far, two of them, you could have closed your eyes and heard the same voices that you do on television or on the air. It was magnificent. I applaud our students for working so hard and giving such contributions to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Ford.
Hello, everyone. Fortunately, at the last meeting, I was sick, wasn't doing very well, but I feel much better now, so thanks for letting me be here today. To carry on with what trustee Witt said, I didn't really know Gary Portner very well. I'd only met him one time. We had a sit-down, one-on-one meeting when I first came in to do my paperwork with the district. And speaking of dedication, I thought it was going to be like, oh, you know, congratulations, and how's everything? A few minutes, he asked me, you know, how's my day going? And then he took out a notebook and he asked me about students' reactions to a no-spoken policy at Irvine Valley College. He wanted to know about my experiences being the chief justice and what I'd learned, and it was like an action item meeting. He's like, you know, I want to know what students think about this, and this, and this, and he's there taking notes in this little 10, 15-minute meeting we had. So I was very impressed to see that, that is so refreshing that somebody's, you know, no matter where, I need to know more about the students, I need to know what's going on, I want to take notes. So it was really nice to know him, even though for that short time, and obviously, everyone was very moved by the actions he's done. So, yeah, on that. I'm pretty excited to be going to a conference for California student trustees here coming up soon. So, it's going to be a good learning experience, hopefully it goes well, and I want to offer a welcome to our new acting chancellor, Fitzsimmons. Yeah, that's it. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, and that's a good segue into the acting chancellor's report.
Thank you to everyone who has welcomed me as I fill in as acting chancellor. We are certainly going to miss Gary Portner, and we appreciate his leadership and dedication to the district and colleges. He was a good friend, and we really will miss him dearly. Just a few items to provide information on. Over the course of this month, I will be meeting with the shared governance groups, leadership, and plan to have regular meetings during this transition time period. I want to increase two-way communication, and I think that's important. I believe that this will be helpful to everyone as I look forward to having these regular opportunities to meet with all of you and be able to have feedback back and forth with all of you. I think that'll be good. In addition, I wanted to provide a brief follow-up regarding Workday. We continue to work on improving the Workday functionality, and I'm pleased that many of you are assisting in this effort. We did have the consultants in here for the planned health check evaluation, which was part of our original work plan. And to do that at this point in the project, it was extremely beneficial. We'll be going over this report pretty thoroughly over the next few weeks. There are several recommendations of areas in which we can improve, as we expected and had hoped that we would get from having this report. My preliminary review confirms what I had heard expressed to me by classified staff, that the administrative assistants and senior administrative assistants do have increased workload, and we will be reviewing this with them and determining what is happening. Their jobs have changed quite a bit since they have been reviewed. It's probably been over 10 years since they had a review, from my understanding, and so we're going to take a look at both their job descriptions, what their workload is, what's happening, and see if we have to make some business process changes as a result of looking at this closer. And I want to make sure that you know we are listening and have a lot of good people working to sort through these issues as we continue to make adjustments during the implementation process, and I appreciate your patience and support as we finish implementation and fine-tune all of these hundreds of business processes to make them work for all of us. So, more to come on this, but we wanted to make sure that you knew where we were on this. Next month, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College will be hosting their professional development weeks, and there's going to be a lot of activities going on. I look forward to attending many of these events. On Tuesday, August 16th, will we hold the chancellor's opening session. And this year, we will host Van Ton Quinnlevin. She's vice chancellor of Economic and Workforce Development at the State Chancellor's Office. And she will provide an overview of the new state and regional initiatives to improve workforce development and close the skills gaps. So I encourage everyone to attend this, as this is going to be a really big initiative coming forward, and I think we will learn a lot from her presentation. So that's all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have college presidents' reports, and I see that, at least for one night, we have, the three leaders are all female, so that's, I think, a good thing. So, let's call on Linda Fontanella. Do you want to speak for IVC?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Board of Trustees and acting chancellor. I am Linda Fontanella, the vice president for student services at Irvine Valley College. Dr. Glenn Rockmore, president, is traveling today, and it's my pleasure to be here just to give a report on a few items at the college. IVC will certainly miss Chancellor Portner. We understand what a great supporter he was of our college, and we thank him for his service. On a personal note, I'd like to say that while I worked with the district planning committee, and we were developing the mission statement for the district, Chancellor Portner knew how important it was to me to get the word equity into the mission statement. And for three years, I talked about this, and when it finally happened, he turned to me and he said, "Well, Linda, good job. Your work was finally done." So I'll always remember him about that. I would like to first introduce to you a new member of our staff. We have Lieutenant John Meyer, recently joined the IVC Police Department. Lieutenant Meyer started his law enforcement career in 1984 as a deputy sheriff for the Orange County Sheriff's Department. In 2015, he retired as the chief of police for San Juan Capistrano. We are very pleased to have John join the IVC family. Thank you, John. I won't be repetitive, because trustee Milchiker has already mentioned this event, but we would like to congratulate Dr. Rockmore on being invited as one of the keynote speakers to the event at UCI. The conference title was "Powering the Future," with a focus on education and business partnership in order to prepare students for success as they enter into the workforce. We were very proud that he was there that day. We are busy gearing up for the fall semester. August 8th through the 11th, IVC will offer a four-day orientation workshop for our incoming students. The orientation will include featured speakers each day, student panels, academic success and other workshop, receptions for our parents, campus tours, and resource fairs. And thank you also, I think it was trustee Wright who talked about ACCA 101 class. We will be hosting that barbecue at IVC this weekend, and I also would like to acknowledge and say that we appreciate the work that Dr. Rockmore and Dr. Bouguet has done to make this a great program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have Kathy Worley on behalf of Saddleback College.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and acting chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons. It's fun to say that. I think we're going to look forward to working with her on this interim process. I think we're going to look forward to working with her on this interim process. We want to, or I just wanted to mention that Dr. Burnett is today speaking with Terrence Nelson at the Chancellor's Office to the Board of Governors. They were having a hearing today, and then tomorrow, they and some staff and students will be attending a ceremony to accept the Rice Award for 2016 on behalf of our Veterans Program. The John W. Rice Diversity and Equity Award was established in 2001 to honor programs, faculty, administrators, districts, colleges that have contributed toward faculty and staff diversity or student equity. Individuals or programs that do this are eligible for nomination, and Saddleback's Veterans Program was nominated. The winners need to be selected for clearly demonstrating the outstanding achievement of diversity or student equity, which our program truly has. In other news, talking about events that we're going to have happen on campus, this weekend, you'd have an opportunity to see the Little Shop of Horrors, if anybody's interested, Friday and Saturday evening. And we're also looking forward to having our faculty and staff all on campus for the Professional Development Week, and we've got a very, almost dizzying array of programs and sessions that are set up over the course of the days that we're going to be here, that are going to keep everybody very busy. I know board members attend a lot of them, so it is a very busy time. And we're looking forward to having students back on campus and starting a new semester. That's one of the best things about education, is that you have a fresh start every semester, every term. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll have an update from associated student governments, and I think we only have IVC here. How do you pronounce your name?
Sahar Wahidi.
Okay.
So, good evening to the Chancellor, members of the Board of Trustees, and everyone attending. My name is Sahar Wahidi, the ASG of IVC, Vice President of Academic and Legislative Affairs. I'm substituting for Tabiana Smith, as she has had a death in her family. First, the ASG of IVC is proud to announce that we have a full slate of officers for the upcoming academic year. We have 19 Executive Cabinet members, including IVC Representative to the Board of Trustees, 21 new student senators, one open position, and new this year are returning student commissioners on each of our individual committees: Budget and Finance, Community Outreach, Development, Diversity, Facilities and Technology, Judicial Court, Public Relations, and Student Activities. Next, our advisors have been in discussion to schedule a joint meeting with ASG of Saddleback Student Leaders for mid-August. During the weekend of August 12th to 14th, 20 members of our Executive Cabinet will be having a leadership retreat to discuss student selection, meaning facilitation, student leadership, development theory, conflict resolution, delegation, and goal setting. Each member of our Executive Cabinet is receiving the book, "The Student Leadership Challenge: Five Practices for Becoming an Exemplary Leader," by James Koos and Barry Posner, to read prior to our training. We have an additional 45 student leaders from our legislative branch, Justice Court, and individual committees returning to IVC on Monday, August 15th through Thursday, August 17th, to begin workshops on specific committee trainings, students-on-campus committees, budget, preliminary procedures, campus resources, emergency preparedness, programming, calendar, public speaking, time management, diversity, and multicultural training. Finally, as stated earlier, ASG of IVC is working with our campus departments to facilitate later week, New Student Welcome Week, from Monday, Thursday, August 8th to 11th. This will include student life sponsored convocation activities, featured speakers, student panel, academic success, and other educational workshops, parent receptions, campus tours, and resource fairs for all newly enrolled first semester IVC students. These upcoming weeks will be busy, but ASG of IVC and myself is proudly looking forward to them, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now on to discussion items. Oh, no, excuse me. Any board requests for reports? No? Okay. Now, we're on to 4.0, Discussion Items. Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Student Success Scorecard. Please come forward.
Can you hear me? Or should I?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm short, so sorry for that. So, I'm Denise Ntseong, District Director of Research Planning and Data Management. And joining me tonight, as we typically do, is Dr. Jennifer Klein, who is Saddleback's new Director of Planning, Research, and Accreditation, and also Dr. Craig Hayward, who is IVC's Director of Research Planning and Accreditation. Tonight, we're going to present this California Community College Student Success Scorecard as required by the state. We're going to do an overview for you on the accountability reporting, where it came from. We're going to talk about the five-year trends in the metrics, give you a little summary and a little bit of how we incorporate it into other parts of our planning agendas. So, just as a kind of contextualization, do you remember that this was way back in 2004 with AB 1417, the ARC, Accountability Reporting for Community Colleges, was started and which the scorecard is, we now call the scorecard. There are four tiers of the accountability framework. So, there's a state of the system, which is kind of a high level. We have the scorecard, which is what we're going to be looking at, where it frames student progress and completion by the colleges. And we also disaggregate that by student demographics. We also have available to us the data mart, so if you ever want to query this data and cross, look at it, slice and dice it different ways, you're able to go on the State Chancellor's website to look at this data. And for researchers, we're also able to use data on demand, which gives a student-level data that we can use for our research purposes, so we have access to that as well. That was all part of the accountability framework, to give us the ability to research and dig into the metrics. So, as you've seen before and in your packet, it's available online. You can look at the scorecard for not just our colleges, but any college in California. It also has the college profile, so you can see the demographics. It's like karaoke. Is that, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know if I should project more or...
You're doing fine.
Better, okay. So, in the scorecard, there are six main metrics, and they categorize them by momentum points and completion outcomes. So, you'll see in the rates that will show you the trends, you'll see a remedial progress rate for math, English, and ESL, a persistence rate, a 30-unit completion rate, and then the big ones, which are, we call the SPAR, or Student Progress and Achievement Rate, which includes degree, certificate, transfer, and transfer prepared, and then completion among CTE students. These metrics, the ones that have asterisks on them, also have it disaggregated by populations that are college-prepared, meaning students who are looking at, they look like they're going into college because they've attempted a math or English college-level course. And then, we also look at another subset of students called unprepared for college. So, you can see these metrics broken down for these students who their lowest course attempted in math or English was remedial. So, you have all these ways to look at the metrics in the scorecard. And then, the newest metric is number six, which I'll go into detail in a minute, is called Skills Builder. And this is looking at wage gain for non-completers. It's trying to address a population that we haven't looked at before in the scorecard. So, changes in the scorecard, we typically try to give you a summary of anything that's changed. And so, this year, the new Skills Builder metric, so this is, try not to read you the slide, but it's pretty hearty in that it's a median percentage change in wages for students who completed higher-level CTE, Career Technical Education Coursework. And we're starting with one cohort in 1213. These students left the system, and they didn't receive any traditional outcome. They didn't get a transfer, didn't transfer, they didn't get a degree or certificate when they were with us. So, typically, the State Chancellor's Office does kind of an analysis. They worked on this for over several years, building, understanding, and looking at deeply who these students are. And they're usually workers who are maintaining or adding to a skill set, is what they found, students who don't earn a certificate or degree or transfer, as we mentioned. They usually take one or two courses, and they're usually older students that go back into the workforce. So, they build a cohort, and how you get into the cohort is you completed at least one CTE course of half a unit or higher. You're no longer enrolled after a year, and you didn't get any degree or certificate or transfer. So, it's a population that isn't included in a lot of these other metrics. And then, the outcome, they take these set of students and look at their, when they had achieved this cohort, got into the cohort, a year prior, what their wage was. They match the data at the State Chancellor's level to economic, I'm sorry, employment data, which we don't have at the campuses, but the State Chancellor's Office has the ability to match this data. They look at their wages prior to them enrolling, and then a year after, after they've left. And the difference is in, is what they're looking at, the gain or the decrease in their wage. And then, what they do is they look at the median percent increase in earnings for these students. So, it's a, it's a pretty heavy metric, and, but I'll show you what it looks like in the scorecard. So, this year is the first year we're seeing this metric, and in terms of the cohorts for IVC and Saddleback, they're both above the statewide median, we'll call it percentage gain in wages. So, at IVC, these students have a 15% median percentage gain in their wages, and at Saddleback, What does this look like a little bit deeper? They also include in the scorecard the top 10 Skills Builder disciplines. And we shouldn't be confused with, these are not the occupation they're in, but the courses that they took here at the community colleges. So, these, as you see in Irvine Valley, you have accounting, administrative justice, business management. So, these students took, came in, took a course in these disciplines, and then somehow we were tracking them, so they got increased wage gains without getting a certificate or degree. Similarly, at Saddleback, you'll see child development, real estate, nutrition. These are the top disciplines that have the most students that we're able to track. Does that make sense? So, that was a kind of a high-level overview of the Skills Builder metrics. I'm going to hand it off, we're going to relay, and Craig Hayward is going to start and go through the five-year trends of the other metrics.
Thank you, Denise. Good evening. Craig Hayward, Director of Research Planning and Accreditation at Irvine Valley College. And I'm going to review some of the metrics in this year's scorecard with you tonight. At the top of the batting order, as it were, we have the Student Progress and Achievement Rate, the SPAR, which is an overall completion metric that we use in our strategic planning at the district. So, this is one of our key performance indicators under Goal Two, the goal to increase student completion and decrease the achievement gap. So, here you can see that both colleges are well above the state average, which is the golden line, California being the golden state. And then, we have blue for IVC and red for Saddleback. Some very positive trends, a slight decline for IVC in the latest scorecard from 64, about 64 to 62. And that, we looked into that a little bit using that student unit record data that Denise was mentioning earlier, and that was largely, that was based on decrease in transfers for that particular cohort. And 1415 is the last year that that cohort is tracked, but it began six years ago. So, that's something, so it was affected by the context in the state six years ago for that cohort, so we expect to see that recover. Something else we like to do with that rate, because it is important to us in our strategic plan, is look a little deeper at the, this is one of those asterisked metrics, and look at the completion rates for those students who come in and are designated college-prepared, i.e. they go directly into transfer-level or college-level math and English coursework, versus the students who go into the remedial or basic skill sequences. And there's a very, the takeaway here is there's a very large and persistent gap between those two groups, which gives extra emphasis to the further metrics in the scorecard, which deal with our remedial population and the other initiatives and efforts that we have ongoing to work with that population. So, clearly, bridging that gap would raise our overall achievement rates, if we could get our college-prepared students to achieve at the rate equivalent to the college-prepared. On to the momentum metrics. This is the 30-unit rate, so this is some, you can think of this as the halfway mark to an associate's degree, pretty much. And it's a fairly stable, both colleges well above the state average, and simply monitoring the accumulation within these cohorts of achieving at least 30 units. So, about three-quarters of students at both Saddleback and IVC complete at least 30 units, which is thought of as a kind of major momentum point. And then, persistence rates. This is the rate at which students sort of stay enrolled. So, do they persist? They begin, they enter the cohort, and are they still here three semesters later? So, they started, say, in fall 2008, and then this would look at where they then back in fall 2009. And so, again, you have about three-quarters of students at both campuses persisting, which is above the state average a little bit. And with that, I'm going to pass the baton.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jennifer Tucker Klein, and I am the Director of Planning, Research, and Accreditation at Saddleback College. I'm here to talk to you about the scorecard metrics, and we're going to transition to all of the remedial progress rates. So, the first is the remedial math rate, and this is defined as the percentage of credit students who start out at any level below transfer math, and then they're tracked to see how they fare in terms of completing a college-level math. So, instead of looking at college completion, this is literally just looking at college-level completion for math only. And as you can see, we are actually starting to close in on the statewide average. And we are definitely mining through the data to understand why this is happening, and this is a continuous effort at both colleges. And the next slide is the English remedial rate. So, here, again, we are looking at the percent of students who start below college-level English and how they fare in passing college-level English over a period of six years, okay? And as you can see, there is a little bit of a blip in the middle, and Craig can talk about this at the end of our presentation for IVC. At Saddleback, this is actually starting to be on a slight decline, and we are mining through the data and have already started to find areas to target. But the good news is, the upside is that we are, you know, 15, 20 points above the statewide average, and that's wonderful. For ESL remedial progress rate, this is the percentage of students who, after they're tracked for six years, they're at an ESL level, and then they go on to take a college-level course in the discipline that they started in. So, if they're taking reading or writing, it's how did they fare in college-level English. These are really small cohorts, and so, we basically caution you in interpreting this data. For Saddleback, for example, some of these cohorts are less than 100 that actually pass. And the statewide average is, yes, higher, but again, this is aggregations of data where the cohorts are actually not that large, even statewide. And then, lastly, we have the overall CTE completion rate, and this is the percentage of the cohort of students who complete more than eight units in a single CTE discipline, and then, within three years of their first CTE course, excuse me, let me start over here, the percentage of a cohort of students who complete more than eight CTE units in a single CTE discipline within three years of their first CTE course. And then, they're tracked within And then they're tracked within six years to see if they transfer, earn a degree or certificate. And here you can see that we've basically closed in on the statewide average. And now we're moving on to Craig for the summary.
Sure, we can tag team on this. So real quick, some highlights, the, for IVC, we just point out that on six of the eight metrics, now that measures, now that we have eight, IVC is outperforming the statewide average. The overall completion rate, you know, really the very important metric here, we do want our students' completion rates to increase, and for them to get degrees, certificates, and to transfer, 15 points above the state average, so really outstanding, one of the top rates in the state. We note with the ESL remedial progress rate that it's strongly tied to age and ed goals. So we have an older skewed population at IVC, and I believe at Saddleback as well, which tends to drag our average rates down, but when you disaggregate by age, our young ESL students are doing very well in ESL progression. So that's something to keep in mind. And there's a lot of ferment in ESL currently at IVC, a lot of activity in basic skills and remedial innovation in general. And as I mentioned earlier, we noted that the 2009-10 cohort, the latest cohort, had fewer transfers, and that's sometimes thought of as being a little bit out of our control. So if there's enrollment management going on at the CSU or UCI, that, that can have an impact on our completion rates, particularly, you know, with our completion tied so tightly to our transfer rate. That's my observations. Back to you Jennifer.
Okay. So in summary, for Saddleback, we outperformed the statewide average on seven out of the eight measures, including the completion rate. We're really pleased to see that our overall completion rate is 59%, and this actually is exceeding our goal, so that's wonderful. And we are 12 points higher than the statewide average. As I mentioned before, with our ESL cohorts, these are very, very small student populations, so they're going to be variable due to the small sample, or, excuse me, cohort sizes. We also, through data mining, noticed that the students are younger, that do well, and they take a lot of classes. But this is not something that's normal, it's an aberration. So when you saw that one particular year where it was like a 27% bump, that was just a statistical aberration, and we are definitely dedicated to looking more into this, and we have a lot of great initiatives, including our Basic Skills Level Up Grant, where we can continue to pursue and understand the data even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Just about. We're almost done. So yeah, and just implications, as Craig and Jennifer mentioned, lots of initiatives on the campus, we're using it in strategic planning, there's all kinds of things that you will be hearing about equity and Triple SP. So these are important metrics, and we'll take questions.
Thank you. Good presentation. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, that was a good presentation. I know it's regulated by the state that we have, you have to present this information to the board every year, but I still appreciate you doing it. And I was going to mention in my board report that our two colleges continue to outperform statewide average in most all of the metrics, six out of eight for IVC and seven out of eight for Saddleback College, but I didn't, I wasn't able to do that in two minutes, so I had to take it out of my board report, so I was able to put it in here. I was going to ask you a few, a few questions. I think it's a really good idea, the skill builders is a good idea, so they take this out of, hopefully out of the college completion rate, these, these students that, these working students that just take one or two students. And then what we're doing is we're determining how much their rate, their wages go up, when they take one or two classes in auto mechanics and some of these more professional skill builders courses. But how do we know what their, how do we prove, how do we get the data, what their wages are before and after? I mean, as a community college, how do we get that data?
At our local level, to try to bring it down? Well, I think we've, we're, Craig and I sit on the scorecard advisory group, I mean, it's always a challenge to try to give, get them to give us that data, because it's protected with SSN numbers, and it's the state level, so as you lobby for more transparency, I think across the state and nation, we're, we're trying to get better at tracking students. And right now, I think it's so protected, we, we don't get that data individually, so we sort of use these aggregated reports, but I, I think there's-
Are you saying this, I'm sorry, are you saying the state can get this data, but the colleges can't, and why is that?
Yeah, I don't know why, it's true. But yes, we're not able, we've, we've asked for ability to have that data, but we-
It's really valuable to tell students that if they take one or two colleges, at Saddleback College or Irvine Valley College, they'll make more money, which is what we want to, we want for our students.
So there was a special legislation passed to extend sort of the circle of trust from the Economic Development Department to the chancellor's office, but they're not able to then pass that, that circle of trust on to the individual colleges. So we get the, we get the summary, not the individual data. But that's a start, and it's better than we had some years ago when we didn't have that information at all.
Well, it's helpful, I think, for our students, and it's helpful for our students to see this data, to know that they're getting a very good education compared to all the other community colleges in California. Also, in the top 10 skill builder disciplines, are these in order of how, of how much money they make? Like, accounting makes the top amount of money, and manufacturing and industrial technology makes the least in Irvine Valley College?
It's actually, so if, it's in one of their handouts, it's actually ordered by the size of the number of students in those disciplines, so not by wage gain. Yeah, so accounting had 145 students in that discipline that they could track.
Oh, I see, so more, yeah. Right now, we're offering more accounting classes at Irvine Valley College, I know, so anyway, I won't go into that now. But in, under Saddleback College, it says, there's two cohorts, one is child development, early care and education, and another one is infants and toddlers. They sound very similar to me, under the top 10 skill builders disciplines.
Mm-hmm. I think, we'll have to, I think, child development, early care and education, I think they're combined together, so-
Well, it's listed twice.
Yeah. Oh, is it? It rolls over on the PowerPoint. Oh, it's listed twice, but I think it's one, it's actually one. On the, on the handout, you'll see it's actually one occupation, or one discipline, not occupation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, was it in the PowerPoint that you see it?
Yeah, it looks like two different-
Sorry, yeah, it's actually combined together.
Excuse me, I think she, if you look farther down the list, it says infant and toddlers. That's her conclusion.
Oh, 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 further down.
That's what I meant, it says it right there.
Oh, this one right here, infant and toddlers.
On this list too, the top 10 skill builders list.
It might be that the programs are separated by, by different top codes classifications, so it could be similar in, in, in subject area, but they're different in certificates or program areas. Yeah, we can, we can, we can explore for, we can get, we can ask the Klim Office.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Okay, thank you. Excellent report. I have a few questions here, so hopefully I don't go too long. I do want to commend that both colleges love the fact that you guys are above the state average in so many of the metrics, that, that's good. But at the same time, on the ESL, and Jennifer, thank you for, you actually kind of answered my question before I asked it, but I want to make sure that we're clear that we're not discounting the data and not looking for ways to improve the ESL, and as you both mentioned, that it tends to be the older ESL students, that we really want to figure out a way to help them. That, that, it sounds like you're already doing that, but I just wanted to clarify that. And then also, just mention that on the overall completion rates and, and that data, I'm very excited because of, you know, data shows, the research shows that the pathways that we're going to start implementing at both colleges will hopefully improve those, and I look forward to seeing those numbers go up as a result of those, those programs that we're going to be implementing. And then my last one is the idea of the skill building, or skill builder rate. How do we know whether their wage increase was related to the classes they took versus a negotiated raise by their union, or, I know it says in the data, they take into account cost of living and inflation and that, but there's no way to, how do you, is that even possible? I, I don't know if we can really truly attribute, love to, love to take all the credit. I'm sure you guys would too. It looks great for us, and we're running, hey, our, you know, you make more money when you come here, but how do we, how can we prove that?
And similar to Trustee Milchiker's question, we've asked about alignment, so it's alignment in what they're studying here, to the occupational code, and even that data, I haven't seen some, I haven't really seen information coming out about that, but I don't know, Craig, if you've seen any of that, but that's a question that we all have, like, how do we know, how can we attribute that they're still in that, the discipline that they took a course in, how do we know it relates to their wage gain? So I haven't seen data coming out, I don't know if you've seen anything more, but it's a, it's a good question.
Yeah, so I would just say, you know, research methods-wise, it's not an experiment, it causality, it's correlational, so there are those caveats, but when you get a large enough group, and as a group, they're experiencing a large enough gain over the baseline expect, expectation of salary increase, then you can begin to infer something, but there are some caveats around how strong an inference can be made.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank, thank all of you for your report tonight, very interesting. I, I'm sorry, but I'm not particularly impressed that we're beating the state averages, frankly, given the demographic in our area. It seems to me that, I mean, that's great that we are, love that fact, but I'm also interested in how are we doing against the similar colleges that we're competing against? And I didn't see anything in the presentation about that. There was, and also I was interested more in hearing about how this data use, is used in setting specific goals, rather than just saying, okay, fine, we want to beat the state average, don't we really want to achieve at a certain level, and are we? I think Dr. Klein mentioned that in her comments, at least in one of the areas, that in fact we are, you know, this was better than the goal that we had set, but I didn't hear that as a regular theme, I guess, in the presentation, I would have been interested to hear that. And I, I thought also that the implications on planning and continuous quality were pretty much what I had heard in the past, there weren't a lot of specifics in there about what are, how is this really influencing our student success initiative here? And I'm looking for, I guess I'm looking for a little bit more detail. And then finally, I just, frankly, the whole skill builders thing is, I'm just sitting here scratching my chin going, why is this important? Why does the state feel that there's a priority that we should even be tracking this? These are students that take one or two classes, it seems to me that there are more important things that we ought to be looking at than that, so, you know, just cheering, thank you.
Do you guys want to comment on any of, I have a couple things, but-
Sure.
... colleges, or, yeah, I wrote them down, so.
So I think I can real quickly talk about the ranking. So we have looked at that, it's not included in the presentation, both Saddleback and IVC, at least for the completion metric, which is the one that's included in our, our strategic plan, both IVC and Saddleback are in the top 10 in the state out of 113 colleges. So we do, so not only are we above average, we are, you know, right up there, and so we can certainly provide that.
And I think that is-
That's good.
-great information that I want to hear.
And we can include it, and duly noted, thank you. And let me see, now, what was, planning, okay. So the completion rate is included in the strategic plan, and we have a target set for that for every year that are based off the system-wide strategic plan targets of increasing completion by 2.5%. And that, that's kind of reverse engineered back onto a goal of increasing the number of graduates, so that we're doing our share to move the needle on, on the completion challenge set by the President of the United States. So that's kind of how we did that. Because the cohort starts six years back, we can't, you know, we, there's not much we can do for a cohort that's in its fifth year, you know, that, so we haven't had our, so it's prorated, so we expect, so there's a, we have actually more data on, on those goals and those targets that we use in District-Wide Planning Council, in our annual strategic planning retreats, and so there is more data available that could be shared around how we use that metric in particular. The other metric that's really key is the gap between the college-prepared students and the underprepared students, and that's driven a lot of work in our Basic Skills Initiative, and both colleges now have received Transforming Basic Skills Grants from the states, which are $1.5 million grants, to help us move the needle on, with that population, which is where we think we're going to get sort of the biggest bang for the buck in terms of increasing the completion rates, because, you know, from 50%, there's a lot, there's a lot of gain, whereas, you know, the, the college-prepared students, we, we have 80% completion rates with those students, which is the, our demographic kind of good bones, if you will, we have a lot of strong students, but the majority of our students actually come in, in that underprepared group.
That's really helpful.
And I'll just add one more point about the planning, and we probably are going to do an integrated planning presentation at some point, because we have so many different initiatives, Triple SP, equity, basic skills, enrollment management, but the state has, also has a new Office of Institutional Effectiveness that has set statewide goals as well as district goals and college goals. And in that, this year, there was some optional scorecard metrics that you could set and have targets. So, so that's a way that the state is also pushing us to not just be satisfied with a statewide average, but they're asking us, these are optional this year, we want you to consider using these scorecard metrics and setting a target against them. And so we'll share that with you, a preview in the fall, as we do have a strategic planning presentation, and we'll incorporate the institutional effectiveness, which, which uses a scorecard metrics.
Pardon me, there was one other item that I wanted to specifically ask Dr. Klein about, and that was actually in the, not in this presentation, but the other materials that you had provided to us. And there was a number that stood out for me, and it had to do with the student counseling ratio. It seemed like the Saddleback number was just way out of whack with both the state as well as IVC. That was on Exhibit B, page 1 of 4, on the far right-hand side at the bottom. That 1,010 to 1 versus, I think IVC was 619 to 1, and the state was something like 657 to 1. Do we have an issue there?
Issue? Well, I'm not certain, but we can look into it, and as we continue to look at all of our success metrics alongside the support services, so counseling being obvious, one of those, we can drill into this and see if it's, if there's an issue.
Thank you.
I'll just add one thing, and Jennifer and I can work on it, when we, we report, this metric in particular looks at how we count counselors, and so we need to look at our employee data that we send to the state on how, there's a whole methodology on how we look at the workload of counselors against the student population, so that kind of triggers to me a review of our, our employee data, sending it to the state.
Thank you. Student Trustee Ford.
Yeah, looking at the skill builders rate, median percentage change in wages, I was concerned that, I don't know if it's an issue with tracking of the data, or just reporting, because you mentioned that we can't get that information. All things considered, and the fact that IVC does have a higher completion rate, I was wondering why the rates between the two campuses are not more equative, or if IVC were higher in the wage change, that Saddleback has a higher percentage of wage change. So I don't know if that's a reporting data issue.
I don't know, have you guys looked at it in any?
It has to do with the ratio of occupations, and which are weighted more, which have more, more students going into those disciplines, and I know I said occupations, they're really disciplines, we infer that they're in those occupations, but they might not be.
And the extent to which we can actually find those students in, in the employment databases. So that's, that's an obvious bias right there, so.
So I would encourage you to look at the detailed information, which shows the percentage wage gain by occupation, like, it's 28%, I believe, for accounting students, which is well above the average. well above the average, but there are some lower wage gain areas, so just kind of like the mix of the particular disciplines that students, some are more remunerative than others, some have a, you get a higher pop, and so I think Saddleback has many more CTE students in general, and some of their programs have, have a greater wage gain for their students, they have more students in those, those areas, so kind of how that median works out.
And secondly, for support systems, have you began to look at, looking at programs like peer mentoring, I've read a lot of educational research that shows that classroom pure mentors benefit students much more, especially in areas like ESL, because it creates a, you know, a tribe mentality, a cohort, a group that they can be comfortable with, somebody who's gone through the same learning experience, whether it's mathematics or ESL, they can help them perform and learn.
Thank you for that, we'll be sure to share that with our faculty members in those areas, thank you.
Good.
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Schmider.
I'm, I'd just like to point out, I think you've heard.
Mike, can you?
Sorry. I believe you've heard some presentations on ESL and changes in the ESL program, and you'll be hearing some more, because we'll be implementing some fairly, a fairly significant change in how we're addressing ESL, in particular, allowing students who are more job and transfer-oriented to be separated from the lifelong learners, and that, since we'll have programs that are really directed towards the educational goals of our students, I think what we'll see is better success in both of those, and they'll be measured differently as, which is appropriate, so I think we'll be seeing some of those changes really showing up, starting this year as we, as we separate those two programs from each other.
Thank you. Before we go to round two, for two trustees, I had a quick question, you got round two coming from a couple of them. I'm trying to understand the value of the persistent rates, and because it looks like we're pretty much dead even with the state, and I really, I, I might be missing something, I'm trying to understand the value to community college districts and colleges to the data here. Can you explain it to me? Because I could see it be used in a negative way as well, so.
Yeah, well, the persistence rate actually factors in completers as well, it's not as a negative, so it's, it's designed, and that was a tweak that we requested.
Okay, that makes more sense now.
Yeah, so they count as persisting, even though they completed, they're, they're not counted as a negative, so that's, that's an important caveat, but a lot, a lot of the momentum metrics, it's interesting, and this goes to the point that trustee Lang was making too, about the relationship among these metrics, where the momentum metrics for the state are actually trending up, but the completion metric for the state is trending down, so it calls into question, you know, really, the, you know, the value, if you will, of the, of the momentum metrics, when we have that, that completion metric, but the momentum metrics are actually more valuable as institutional effectiveness indicators, where, where you can get them more quickly, but when, when you look at it, and the cohort's already cooked and done by the time it shows up here, and it's six years is done, knowing what the persistence was at three semesters in is kind of academic, so, you know, that's why the, the completion rate in the scorecard is so important, or the completion rates, because there, there's the CTE completion rate as well. So, you know, the, the exact relationship between those things can be fairly nuanced and complex, and so I guess the, the value of the persistence rate is in the eye of the beholder, perhaps.
As I suspected. Okay, thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on trustee Lang's and maybe help for a future presentation in the, for the metrics, I think what I'm hearing from him, if I may say, is that it might be helpful to have maybe a couple additional lines of comparison for how we compare to the other schools in Orange County, or how we compare to schools of similar demographics, we have a very diverse demographic, as you've all mentioned, and we all know, so find schools like that, and how do we compare to them, you know, similar size, multi-college districts, something like that, add those lines, and maybe that'll help, help us see how we're looking, and also maybe within each result, a print see or some indicating, what was the goal? Did we achieve the goal, or we blow the goal, write on it, and maybe a little something about how the goal was determined, because as you mentioned, maybe we're going to change the, the parameters of our goal based on suggestions from the state, that could be important information as well, just, just a thought.
No, thank you, that's very good.
Thank you. Trustee Milchick.
Yeah, just echoing what trustee Prendergast mentioned, I'm, I think it might be helpful to disaggregate the ESL into, and completing on what Dr. Schmider mentioned also, perhaps disaggregate the students in the ESL as to age and, and whether they're older students or they're younger students getting, getting jobs, and perhaps putting the number of students that are involved in this particular metric, because it's a small number of students, of course, the, the data is less valid, that, as, as you know, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got one more additional question from student trustee Ford.
I'll be quick, obviously, there's ethical issues with doing an experiment on students and seeing the outcomes, but would it be feasible to track a larger cohort to have more demonstrative data of how this effect is on students and their finances and things like that? A small cohort, you really can't even make correlative inferences, it's too small, you need a much larger cohort going forward, and if you can increase the data like more longitudinally over time, and begin to increase the cohort as you go on.
Yeah. Is that for one particular metric, or you're in, in all looking at all?
Just in general, like in all metrics, especially the ones that are suffering, like ESL and maybe math, yeah, that has a much, much smaller cohort size.
Yeah, um, yeah, internally, we can do kind of, yeah, agendize a lot of these bigger research studies internally, that, that's a great suggestion, thank you.
Thank you, and seeing no further questions, question period did exceed the presentation period, is trustee Wright just inform me?
Can I thank you, though? I've done the scorecard presentation for probably five, six years, and this is the most engaged, and that's actually what they're, they would like us to do.
Oh, you don't know what you're asking for by saying that.
Okay, just this much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to consent calendar items, I'm going to go ahead and pull 5.2, which are the resolutions, I figured there'd be lots of folks, trustees who want to speak on those, any other polls? Yes, oh, wait, maybe I need to do that. Trustee Lang.
Uh, yes. 512 and 513, please.
514, just for one question.
Okay. Any other polls? I have a motion to move the remainder of the items, motion by trustee Wright, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Jay, any further discussion, seeing none, go ahead and vote on the items. Unanimous trustee, yes vote, student advisory, yes vote, let's, I must say 5.2 to the end, and let's move to 5.12, trustee Lang.
Yes, I would just like to invite our assistant chancellor to maybe remind us what the importance of the GAN limit is.
Well, we just happen to have executive director and controller Kim Accord at the vice chancellor's chair, and she's prepared to do just that.
Thank you.
Just briefly cover, what this is, so in 1979, the voters passed Proposition 4, which the intent was to limit the growth on expenditures for public agencies that are funded through them, and the calculation, since then, since the time that it was adopted, they add a cost of living and a change in population, which for us is our change in FTES, so that sets the limit, which for 1617 is calculated at 237 million, and then the appropriations that are subject to the limit are mostly our property taxes and state aid, we don't receive a lot of state aid, but the one thing that does calculate is the Prop. 30 EPA funds, just under 3 million, and that calculation for next year is estimated at 191 million, so we're at about 80% of our limit, we aren't in any trouble of reaching that limit at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions on it? Motion by trustee Lang to move 5.12, a second by trustee Wright, no further discussion, go ahead and vote on the item. Item carries unanimous trustee, yes vote, student advisory, yes vote, 5.13, trustee Lang.
Yes, I, I did pull this item, but actually, I was able to resolve the issues that I had with this item, that had mostly to do with the fact that we were approving a contract that had expired at the beginning of the month, and I think I understand why, what the dynamics on that are, so I'm going to, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with the item.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the item?
So move.
Motion by trustee Milchick, second by trustee Wright, seeing no further discussion, go ahead and vote on the item. Item carries unanimous trustee, yes vote, student advisory, yes vote, 5.14, trustee Milchick.
I see here that, that interim chancellor Fitzsimmons has actually answered this question, I, this is one of the many questions I asked her on Sunday, and the question I had was why are we spending $60,000, over $60,000 on equipment for the computer lab in Silverado High School, and the answer is, it was a, it's a consortium, and it's a grant, and it's grant-funded, and it's for adult education, so I, I will approve of this item, so thank you for doing the research on that, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I hear, thank you, a motion by trustee Milchick to move the items, is there a second by trustee Lang, any further discussion, seeing none, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee, yes vote, student advisory, yes vote. Okay, let's go to 5.2, which are the resolutions, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do is take chancellor Portner's resolution first, I'm gonna read an abridged version of the resolution, I'm gonna give trustees the opportunity to speak if they would like to afterwards. Whereas Gary Portner served as chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District since 2010 and has retired, having also served 11 years as deputy chancellor, and whereas Gary Portner guided the district and colleges through complex accreditation issues, spearheaded the district's first integrated strategic plan, supported the implementation of enterprise system improvements, and was a tireless champion of conservative budgetary practices and taxpayer stewardship, enabling the district to fully fund its retiree liability and remain debt-free. This is an abridged version, so there are several more paragraphs. Be it resolved that the board of trustees of the South Orange County Community College District wished to express their deepest appreciation to chancellor Gary Portner for dedicating a 46-year career to higher education and public service, hereby bestowing, bestowing upon him the title of chancellor emeritus. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm obviously very pleased that we're recognizing chancellor Portner for his many years of tremendous service to our district, I was privileged to be on the board when we first hired Gary from the community college district that he was at, as you've heard in the brief resolution that we've made, he did a terrific job, followed, of course, by our now assistant chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons, and probably making this, in my view at least, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, okay, acting, pardon me, acting chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons, probably making this perhaps the most financially healthy community college district in the state. I just wanted to say that Gary was a very steady hand in steering this district through turbulent waters, I wish him a, a very good health for a very long and well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lang, I know that we had several comments already during board reports commending Gary's tenure, and I see we have one more request, trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if anybody's willing to take the odds on how long he stays retired, since he's been pulled out of it three times, but I'm just, just a note.
Trustee Milchick.
That, that was appropriate, because he, he served, he came down from College of the Redwoods, and then he served as our deputy chancellor of fiscal services for 11 years, and then he tried to retire, and we actually lured him out of retirement to be our chancellor, and that was really great that he answered the call, and he came to work as our chancellor, and he stayed for six years, and certainly, as, as other members have said, our district is one of the most financially stable districts in the state, maybe the nation, maybe the world, so, so, so we really thank him, it's good to have a fiscal person at, at the helm of the district, making sure that we are being fiscally conservative and fiscally sound, and so we really thank him for, and wish him a very, very happy retirement, and maybe he'll come back in some, some way, we hope, okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Witt.
I just wanted to add, went to a conference in Sacramento, and you know how you network, and I have to say this, this happened every single time, where are you from? Saddleback College, ooh, stable, stable college, financially sound, I said, yes, sir, it's our chancellor, and so I'd like everybody to know that, it's not just here that we believe that, but it's across the state, and you have to earn that reputation, so I thank him.
Thank you, trustee Wright.
I just wanted to, to say that trustee Jamal, I, I like your comments about changing a few things, so I certainly approve of that, and I, again, I wish Gary the best, because he, he did a wonderful job here, and he will be missed.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I wanted to point out also that there were actually two resolutions. Oh, are you doing, are you doing the second? Okay, then I'll save my comments for that.
If we don't mind.
Thank you.
Oh, but it's under the same item, so.
Yes, so they're on the same item, so we have to vote on one item. We'll go to the next resolution now, and what I'm gonna do, I'll do the same thing again, I'm gonna read a very abridged summary of, in commendation of Marion Burgerson, Marion Burgerson was a longtime public leader here in Orange County, serving in many elected capacities, countywide, statewide, I got a chance to actually get to know her when I decided to run for this office and spend a little time with her, and, I mean, she really is, really was a remarkable woman, if anyone had a chance to interact with her, truly one of the great leaders of this county, in the history of this county. So I'll, I'll go ahead and read short, abridged version of our resolution, whereas Marion Burgerson grew up during the depression era and worked her way through college by filling the vacated jobs of World War II servicemen, becoming a teacher and community activist, leading her on a path of advocacy and public service, and whereas Marion Burgerson served as a school board member, state assembly and state senate republican leader on education and policy issues, Orange County Board of Supervisors, and secretary for child development and education for governor Pete Wilson, therefore, be it resolved that the board of trustees of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend Marion Burgerson's contributions to education, public service, and charities that improve the lives of millions of children and their families in California. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I just wanted to extend my personal sympathies to the Burgerson family on the recent loss of Marion, she was a wonderful role model to myself and all those who aspired to make a difference through public service, she was the one person whose endorsement really meant the most to me when I ran for office, she will be greatly missed, but long remembered, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchick.
Just one comment about, reflection I have about, remembrance about Marion Burgerson, when I founded the Orange County chapter of the California Elected Women's Association for Education and Research, I decided the way to get this organization going was to get the three top elected women in Orange County to come and be speakers, so she and the other two women agreed to come and be speakers, and not only, and the, they really set this organization on the trajectory, and it was really a fabulous organization, I was president for the first three years, and. I was president for the first three years and almost all the elected women in Orange County were members of that organization. And every time we called her to come speak to us, she came. She told the women how to get elected, she let her hair down, she told what it was like to be a school board member, what it was like to work in Sacramento as a superintendent of public schools. And just a really, really nice, hardworking lady that was, really cared about education in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to note her tremendous support for the aquatics community. She was a swimmer herself. Her kids and grandkids played water polo at Newport Coron del Mar. You have the Coron del Mar aquatics facility, is the Marion Burgerson Aquatics Complex. I had an opportunity to meet her on many occasions through that avenue and she was a supporter of me as well when I ran because she wanted me to get a pool built at IVC. But I'm sorry to see it didn't happen before her passing, but she, she will always be remembered for all the outstanding things she's done for the state, things she's done for the Newport community, things she's done for the county and for, had so many impacts and so many lives and she will be greatly missed.
And just to wrap this up, I mean, I guess in some sense she's a political leader, but, and I guess we are to a certain degree, but I, seriously, I haven't met anyone who didn't like Marion Burgerson. Republicans, Democrats, independents, libertarians, she was beloved and she will be sorely missed. So I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lang. I think trustee Wright got the second in, seeing no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote on the resolutions. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote, resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to 6.1, general act, or 6.0, general action item, 6.1, the 2017-2018 academic calendar. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Jay. Any discussion on the item? Trustee Wright.
Just one quick comment. I took a good look at this calendar and I applaud it because of the fact that for the fall semester, we have the same number of instructional days for both the Monday, Wednesday, and the Tuesday, Thursday class. So I think that's wonderful because most of the time it's usually the Monday, Wednesday classes that suffered. So I applaud that.
Great.
It's a little bit different in the spring. In the spring, it's 33 Monday, Wednesday classes and 35 Tuesday, Thursday classes. But that's because of holidays.
Very good. Any other comments or questions on the item? I think we have a motion in a second. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Motion, item carries. 6.2, Ran Valley College MOU with Irvine Unified School District. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion by trustee Prendergast. Is there a second? Second by trustee Lang.
I was just going to say that these are the three that you were presented to the board last month for first reading. And the one that was revised slightly was the Irvine Unified School District per their request, so we did make those minor changes.
Okay. Thank you, acting chancellor Fitzsimmons. Trustee Wright.
Just a real quick question. I was noticing that on all three of these, they have the same dean as being the contact person, whereas I know the one's bio-tech, that would be probably the dean of math sciences during, but is that, is there a reason for that?
Can you, can you come, sorry, to the lectern?
Hello, I'm Tracy Feeney, dean of social and digital sciences and academic programs at IVC. And the reason I'm the contact person for the MOU is because I've been tasked with the dual enrollment under AB288.
Okay.
For test of state reporting requirements and we thought it would be better if that person, the 20 person.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming forward. No further discussions on the item, so let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Item carries. 6.3, IVC MOU with Capo Unified. Motion by trustee Lang. Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Second by trustee Milchiker. Any discussion on the item? No discussion, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.3 carries. 6.4, IVC MOU with Tustin Unified. We have concurrent motions. Give it to trustee Prendergast. And then a second to trustee Lang. Any discussion on the item? No, seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Item carries. 6.5, Saddleback College Sciences Building Project Change Order Number Five. Motion to approve the, motion by trustee Wright.
Second.
Second by trustee Witt, I'll give it to trustee Witt. Any discussion on the item? Trustee Lang.
Since the item does mention a steel fabrication claim settlement process, I thought I would find out what that's all about.
So we're in the middle of negotiation on a change to this project related to the steel. It's working okay for you all. And this item is specific to two out of a number of items that have been resolved. And so we wanted to be very clear that there still will be more coming forward to you as we work through that negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no, thank you. Seeing no further questions or discussions on the item, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. 6.6, Saddleback College Sciences Building Project Change Order Number Six. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Motion by trustee Milchiker, second by trustee Wright. Any questions on the item? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Item is approved. 6.7, Authorization of Payment to trustee absent from last month's board meeting.
Move approval, okay, second.
Okay, so there's a whole bunch of motions, I guess trustee Milchiker, move, trustee Witt, second. Let's go ahead and, any discussion? Go ahead and vote on the item. Well, no, we have a, six trustees in favor of the motion, one abstention, and one student advisory yes vote. Item carries. 6.8, another 6.8, another authorization of payment.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Witt. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote on the item. A six to zero, a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory trustee abstention. Motion carries. 6.9, Environmental Consultant Services Pool Bid Number 334D. Is there a motion to approve the item?
Second.
Motion by trustee Lang and a second by trustee Milchiker. Any discussion? Questions? Go ahead and vote on the item. Item carries unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.10, Architectural Services Pool Bid 331D. Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Item carries unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.11, Board Policy Revision, Grade Changes. Is there a motion to approve the item?
Move approval.
Motion by trustee Milchiker and a second by trustee Jay. And I see we have a question from student trustee Ford.
And I'm not sure who can answer this directly, but recently I went and met with a transfer counselor this summer over at IVC and I spoke with a transfer counselor there and it was the, let's say, I've been there for many years at IVC. And I was recently told about a grade renewal process to help boost GPA and correct classes that have been taken in the past four. And it was the first time I've ever been told about this by any counselor ever. And I spoke to a lot of the other students that I know who have transferred and things like that, who had also been in school for some time like I had. And no one was ever, it's never been brought up to other students and not a lot of people have heard about the grade renewal regulation process. So I'm wondering how we can make it a regular thing that students be told about this if they're eligible for the program. I'm not sure who to.
Who is, who would be able to answer that question?
We have the dean of enrollment services, Arlene Elsroth.
What process were you talking about again?
Grade renewal.
As in repeated courses or academic renewal?
The academic renewal, yeah.
Okay, academic renewal, yeah, that's a forgiveness without repetition policy that is listed in the catalog. It's also on our college website. Information is typically disseminated by counselors in meeting, especially as they're doing academic plans, because there's no way of knowing who, what students may want to do that based on their academic history. So that's generally handled with one-on-one counseling.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I had suggested a very minor change, but I can't tell if that change was adopted or not.
Yes, there was a formatting change where the numbering was off after the deletion section and we will be taking care of that when we, the numbering piece that's one number off, we'll be taking that when we publicize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on the item? Okay, go ahead and cast your vote. Have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Item carries. 6.12, Academic Personnel Actions. No changes. A motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Milchiker. Any questions on the item? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. 6.13, Classified Personnel Actions. No changes to the item. Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Any discussion or questions on the item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote with student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. 6.14, Employment Contract Acting Chancellor. Is there a motion?
Move, second.
We have motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Milchiker. Any discussion on the item? I just, my only comment, as I said earlier, is we're very pleased to have acting chancellor Fitzsimmons in place and look forward to work with you during these next few weeks and months.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Seven, congratulations. 7.0, Reports, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. 7.2, Student, Triple CT Student Trustee Member Election.
It's already over. You can't, you can't run anymore, it's over.
Okay. 7.3, Basic Aid Report. And then 7.4, Facilities Plan Status Report. Okay, now we have 8.0, Reports from Administration and, oh, sorry, trustee Wright.
Just a quick question on, on facilities. How's the move coming or the new move plan to the new sciences building?
Heather, coming great. So recently I sent out a report to the president and the vice presidents at the college that indicated we're in the, really right in the heart of the move. A lot of it's going to take place over flex week when the faculty and staff return. We have pen movers, I'm sorry, we have a mover that's helping us with the move and they'll be engaged in getting the things boxed and moved over. Before that time though, we're still working on a few little punch list items here and there. Things like the ice machines still need to be installed and little things touch up, but we're headed straight for fall occupancy.
Now, have they started moving?
They have started providing the boxes to faculty and staff so that they can begin their packing, but the actual moving into the facility, I don't think has begun yet.
Because I know it's very difficult to move some of those materials.
Yes, it is. Yes, absolutely, especially with regards to the sciences materials.
And then a second question, on the renovation for the task building, have the plans been, the architect plans, have they been approved?
No, they haven't, they've been sent to the division of the state architect and there were a number of changes that needed to be made and so we're working on an addendum to the plans that were approved before we go out to bid and that addendum hasn't been resubmitted yet.
Okay, is that putting them behind schedule then?
It is, we are behind schedule. Specifically, the schedule was delayed as a result of an observation that the foundation wasn't designed in accordance with the geotechnical recommendations and the whole point of this building is to get it more stabilized on the hill. So we stopped what we were doing and made definitely sure that this building is going to be in place and stay in place. Besides that however, there were some programming issues relative to the auto tech technology program. The equipments, the way that the program has changed over the years has caused some challenges with how we're going to be making their equipment ADA compliant as well as seismically braced has really caused some challenges for that department.
Right, maybe they'll have to stay on lower campus.
Well, that would be for someone else to decide besides me.
Just asking because I, about how, how, what's the timeline? How long, how much time have we lost? Because I know they were planning on getting that building renovated as quickly as possible.
Yes, we were expecting originally to go out to bid in February and now we're in July. And so that would be the impact on that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, I asked acting chancellor Fitzsimmons the same questions that trustee Wright asked about this and got the same answer. The other question, I want to find out about the liberal arts building at Irvine Valley College, how is that coming along?
It's a little more challenging. I can't say with as great assurances as I did with the sciences project that it'll be available for fall occupancy. We're doing everything we can to get that building occupied in the fall and our contractor has and continues to be a challenge. There are still some major obstacles in our way of accomplishing that end and we're still working toward fall occupancy, but I could not stand here and guarantee that to you.
I know, it's, you know, fall occupancy is in a month.
I know. We won't know frankly.
So do you, what is your contingency plan? Just to keep things the way they are if the building isn't occupiable, isn't available for occupancy?
So the catalog does have classes scheduled in that building for the fall and Dr. Justice has gone to a great deal of work to ensure that there is a contingency plan. It's, it's not a good one. I mean, it's not the preferred plan, obviously. I mean, not to say he didn't write you a good plan, he did write you a good plan. It's not the preferred plan.
Yeah, they prefer to be in the building.
Absolutely. So we won't know until flex week whether or not that's going to be the case. It's right up to the deadline.
That's right up to the very end.
We're still, we're doing everything.
Okay, thank you, good luck, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to reports from administration and governance groups. Have the Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Yes, good evening trustee members, acting chancellor Fitzsimmons. Thank you so much. So I just wanted to emphasize, and I know this was already brought up, but I just want to emphasize that Saddleback College was recently named a great college, a great place to work for by the Chronicle of Higher Ed, so we're very excited. Out of the 283 colleges surveyed, 93 of the institutions were awarded this recognition and so we are just extremely, extremely proud of this. And we were awarded it under the collaborative governance and compensation and benefits. And so obviously, as the academic senate president, I'm extremely happy to hear that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Faculty Association.
Well, good evening. On behalf of the faculty association, I'd like to
On behalf of the Faculty Association, I'd like to, uh, congratulate Dr. Fitzsimmons on her appointment as Acting Chancellor, and just extend whatever assistance and support we can give you during this time of transition to a full-time chancellor.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Good evening. Uh, congratulations, Saddleback. I agree with the association. Um, congratulations, Debra, and we're looking forward to working with you, or continuing to work with you. I wanted to comment that I'm, I'm glad that you recognize the work that the senior admins and the administrative assistants have been doing all year with Workday. I know I wasn't here last, at the last meeting to hear the report out, but I heard some feedback from it, and so I'm glad that you recognize how much work that they're doing, and that the consultants recognize, recognize that as well, because all of the rest of us who work with them know that they've really been dogged at trying to work through the system and with the system, and it's not been their rigidity or their unwillingness to change that have been at issue with those things. So thank you for acknowledging that. Um, excuse me. And I just want to point out that the state's chan, the state chancellor's office has now re-approved local approval of standalone courses. So some of you may remember that we used to do local approval of virtually all of our courses, and that was, that went away in two thousand twelve, and so slowly, it seems to be dribbling back, so standalone courses will be locally approved.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services.
Go report this evening.
Thank you very much. Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
Starting in July, I became president of the Mission Via Rotary Club, and for the opening speaker, we had Dr. Bill Billingsley, and he was phenomenal. He wowed the people, he even gave them all quizzes, which was kind of fun, and most of them passed. Uh, with that being said, he made our district and Saddleback College look good, so, so hats off to Bill. Um, you, you heard about Admin One-on-One a couple times. Uh, I've been involved with Admin One-on-One for several years, usually on the HR side. They moved me from the HR side to become the keynote closing speaker with this charge. It was phrase, Bouquet, you better be funny, or you better really be toast. So that's my charge. We'll see, I doubt if I'll be in the comedian circuit anytime soon. Um, we have a interesting thing happening this year for the new faculty orientation. We, in the contract, we included language there to have mandatory subject or mandatory day for new faculty orientation. Now, we've had faculty orientation for many, many years for new faculty. Um, this year, we have a partnership we developed with both academic senates, the Faculty Association and HR. We're going to spend an entire day on the last day of flex week, excuse me, Professional Development Week. So, yeah, as board members, feel free to come by. You'll hear all kinds of fun things from the really good stuff about discrimination to classroom pedagogy, as well as different parts of what the academic senate does and the Faculty Association. So that should be a very interesting day. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have the report from Business Services. I'm not sure what title they give you. Kim McCord.
Executive Director of Fiscal Services. Um, just a few updates with finance. Um, one is accounting is in the middle of closing our books right now. It's our first year on Workday, and it's going really well. We do expect to complete the closing and balancing to the county on time. Our auditors were here last week finishing their interim work. So far, they have not identified any findings, which is good. Um, our next audit committee meeting is October twenty-fourth, where we will review the draft report. And lastly, payroll, I wanted to give them some kudos. They just completed, um, getting the negotiated classified salaries and retros in in record time. They really did an amazing job, worked several weekends straight to get that done and end before the, um, close of the fiscal year, so I wanted to acknowledge their work on that.
Great, thank you. We have Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Hi, Karen Martin. I just wanted to say that at the end of June, we did our first-ever Professional Development Summit, uh, by the Irvine Valley College, uh, Classified Senate, and it was a wonderful day. We met at Oak Creek, we had lunch starting around eleven, and we had trustee Milchiker join us, and what was wonderful was she, she walked in apologizing, saying, "Sorry, I can't stay the whole day, I can only be here until one." She ended up staying until about two, and so I, so I took that as a very good sign. Um, and Dr. Bouquet did a wonderful presentation. It was really kind of about career development, taking the next step, and just, we had about forty-five classified, uh, employees come that day, and it was such an educational experience. I saw a lot of note-taking, which was great, and I wanted to thank Dr. Bouquet and Dr. Fontenilla, who shared their experiences of their career paths in, in a California community college system, which was extremely helpful. Then we had, um, Dr. Patrick Taylor also do a presentation about being an effective presenter, and, um, actually got people up presenting pieces so that they could practice what he was instructing them. So it was a, it was a great day, and I was very proud, and we had some wonderful feedback. We're continuing to get a lot of feedback about that kind of, um, professional development activities, so we were very excited to try it out. Um, also, welcome, Acting Chancellor. Um, and I just wanted to say also, um, piggyback on Kathy Schmider's, um, comments, thank you so much for recognizing the workload that Workday has kind of added, especially to the, that particular population of the campus, so we really do appreciate how effective everything, the listening sessions were, and how that's going to really help everybody, so thank you.
Thank you. CSEA President.
Thank you, Mr. President. A local para-educator educator, uh, named Margaret Water, she's the, um, chapter president of CSEA Chapter One Thirty-One. She was one of twelve people that was recognized by the White House, uh, as a school support White House champion of change. Margaret makes a difference in children's lives because she is able to relate to students on their level, and what she does as an intervention para-educator is the fact that, especially, uh, students that have a little bit more difficulty in learning, they really need one-on-one, someone to really help them, and, and Margaret, uh, does that. Um, I know Margaret, I've served with her in many CSEA functions and committees, and, um, I'm, I'm very happy to say that she was recognized by, uh, the White House. CSEA has launched an initiative, um, to campaign to pass the California Children's Healthcare and Protection Act, otherwise known as Proposition Fifty-Five. That's on the November ballot, and it's crucial funding for our children's education and healthcare. Um, the best thing about it, though, no new taxes. So that, we're looking forward for the passage of Proposition Fifty-Five. CSEA is working successful, um, successfully with administration and the legislature to allocate twenty million dollars for our proposed bill, AB Twenty-One Twenty-Two, and that is, is to establish the California Classified School Employee Teacher Credentialing Program. And what that is, is classified employees will be recruited to, um, for the purpose of creating a career ladder for them to become teachers. Candidates would receive financial assistance and to help them get a bachelor's degree and teacher's credentials, and in return, these successful, uh, candidates would agree to teach a certain amount of time. We're also looking forward to the Annual CSEA Conference, which is coming up in just a couple of weeks. The delegates there will be, um, voting on resolutions, um, and under, uh, the legislative part of it, um, they're going to be voting on, uh, whether by majority to approve single payer healthcare, and also Resolution Number Ten opposing the expansion of, uh, charter schools. So if those do pass by majority at the conference, then CSEA will have lobby groups to help, uh, that legislation be proposed at the California Legislature.
Thank you. And bringing up the close of the meeting, Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this short, I know we're on time constraint. Uh, I'd like to first introduce myself. My name is Craig Connor, and I am the Acting Saddleback College Classified Senate President for two thousand sixteen and seventeen. Uh, the Saddleback College Classified Senate's first meeting of the sixteen-seventeen academic year will be held on July twentieth. During this meeting, in response to the fifteen-sixteen previous Classified Senate President's resignation, nominations for this vacant position will be opened. Nominations will close on August third, and a new permanent Classified Senate President will be declared by election on August thirty-first. Uh, I hope to continue to represent Saddleback Classified Senate after this date. Uh, the Classified Senate Executive Board will be attending their annual executive board retreat on August eighth to discuss leadership strategies and set goals for the upcoming year. Uh, I am very excited to announce that on August eleventh, the Saddleback College Classified Senate and Saddleback College President Todd Burnett will be hosting an all-day group-to-team professional development workshop for ninety Saddleback College classified employees. The focus of this workshop is to encourage and stimulate the idea of teamwork and cohesiveness in the workplace. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Fitzsimmons. I've had the pleasure of working with her in the past on district committees, and look forward to continuing working with her in the future.
Thank you, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.